Plenty of room up front.
Yeah.
It is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting order for Monday, June 24th. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Council, first on our docket tonight is the agenda review and adoption. Take a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
So a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have three special presentations tonight. First up is AmeriCorps Senior RSVP.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Wucker, the director of our local AmeriCorps Seniors RSVP program. And I just wanted to thank the city council and the staff for having us here tonight. We have got just some information to share with you about our programs and services that are enhancing the well-being of residents in the Sartell community. First of all, our program is a national volunteer organization, but we've been local in the region since 1973. And RSVP's mission is to promote positive and healthy aging while helping to meet critical community needs. The cities and the counties in this region are our strongest partners. So we really value the opportunity to come and share with you tonight how this program impacts our community here. I'd like to start off by sharing a few statistics with everybody. The Central Minnesota Council on Aging has an office here in Sartell, and they put a profile of older adults of Central Minnesota. They release a profile every year. And what they released last year was in the region related to older adults and aging demographic statistics. And a couple staggering statistics include a 26% increase in our senior population in the region. And in Minnesota is going to continue to take place from 2020 to 2040. And a 56% rise in population for those folks age 85 and older, which is quite large. The CDC also reports an alarming one-fourth of adults age 65 plus are socially isolated and lonely. And as we know, loneliness and social isolation are linked to serious health conditions, including increased risk in premature death. So as our region faces a significant demographic shift, RSVP will continue to play an important role as we meet the needs of our growing population by providing avenues for older adults to be engaged and involved in community and to maintain those connections. I see where on the next slide. That's perfect. Thank you. Right now, we support over 1,000 active older adults in our region that are dedicated to helping others and enhancing human service organizations. We partner with 150 local nonprofit licensed healthcare and public organizations. And so our volunteers are helping to move those missions, the missions of those organizations forward. You can see we've got quite a few volunteers that are involved in food and hunger to strengthen food security in our region, also to help increase K-12 academic engagement and education. And then everything else that we do falls under capacity building, helping those organizations reach and build their capacity to do more with the help of volunteers. And so supporting programs like Aging in Place and companionship Services is one area that we have a lot of impact in, as well as providing transportation to those in need and through health and wellness programs within our communities. We see and hear day after day that spending time in service to others goes far beyond meeting critical community needs. So in our recent volunteer satisfaction survey, you can see, that's in the brown shaded box up there, we had 420 local senior volunteers report or submit our annual satisfaction survey recently. And they reported very high satisfaction with their enhanced sense of meaning and purpose by being involved in volunteer work through this program, improved mental and physical health and social connections through their volunteer roles. So these survey results really are parallel to a report put out by the Mayo Clinic that highlights adults age 60 and over who engage in volunteer service, experience better physical health and mental health as well compared to non-volunteers. And those positive impacts extend to lower rates of depression and anxiety among volunteers as well. In the past 12 years, an unprecedented number of older adults have joined our local program to get involved. And this really does underscore the critical societal need for those social connections, meaning and purpose, those relationships, and fostering that connection. So I am going to introduce Tana Quinvea, Program Coordinator. Next, she is going to share impacts specific to Sartell with you.
Good evening, Council. As we talk about the impact that this program has had over the last 50 years on the volunteers in Sartell, I think it'll help by having us kind of get into the mindset of what it's like to be a retired person. How many people in the room are already retired? A few. Okay. So here's what we're going to look at. When you move your parents here to Sartell so they can be closer to you, and they don't know anyone else, and they're calling you all day long because they aren't sure what else to do, RSVP is there for them. Think about how many of the social connections you have today that are your social connections either because they're parents of your children, and you've hung out with kids together and done things, or maybe they're people that you work with. And when you retire, those social connections can go away and life can get awfully lonely. RSVP is here to help. If you're lucky enough to have a partner in your life and a great group of friends who surround you, I'm here to let you know that as you age, sometimes things happen and your partner's not there. And your friends can't drive to come visit you anymore. And RSVP is still here to help. When you retire and you've done all of the projects that you've been saving for retirement, is anybody else like me? I got a list, right? When I retire, I'm going to get all these things done. But when that list is empty, sometimes your sense of purpose is empty too. And life can be sad and depressing. And RSVP is still here to help. The cool thing is, we're here to help seniors so seniors can make Sartell a better place to live. Last year, there were 99 Sartell seniors who were part of RSVP. They gave 12,000 hours. They saved this community $373,000. This program is open to everybody 55-plus in this area. We serve retired teachers, medical professionals, business owners, truck drivers, and a whole lot more. All right here in Sartell. In order to help this diverse group of volunteers craft a volunteer-infused lifestyle that delights them, oh, I practiced that all afternoon, because a volunteer-infused lifestyle sounds like something I should be promoting. Okay. In order to help these diverse volunteers get involved, we're really thorough. So the first thing we do is we build relationships with human service agencies that work with volunteers. We get to know what their needs are, what their program is, so that we can amplify their volunteer voice. We take time to meet with every single senior who's a part of our program. Orientation is usually one person at a time, and it's usually 45 minutes to an hour. Why? I need to get to know where you've been, where you're at right now, and where you want to go when you retire, or when you're with your retirement. Where do you want to make an impact on this next part of your life? Asking seniors that question, I kid you not, lifts them up. It's a fresh start when you retire. It's not the end. We let seniors know about what their community needs, what the community needs are, and we assist them in getting involved as needed. Not every senior wants to fill out an online application. I can help with that. We support volunteers with transportation reimbursement. When you have a lot of time and you want to get involved, but you're on a fixed income, and it's 10 miles away to volunteer, that can get expensive, you guys. But we reimburse them for transportation reimbursement or for transportation costs. And oh, yes. If you're nervous about volunteering because you're afraid you might fall or something might happen to you, RSVP has a supplemental liability insurance policy for all of our volunteers so they can volunteer with wild abandon. It's gotta be fun. Sartell's 99 volunteers are engaged at 25 different locations. Everything from helping people get their taxes done, to supporting over at the community center, to helping people make their end-of-life plans, United Way, you name it. When a volunteer comes to us, we give them literally hundreds of one-time and ongoing volunteer choices. So I wanted to talk about specifically some things we've done in Sartell. So we have a program called Reader's Theater. This is 60 volunteers who absolutely love to read. And what they've done is they've taken popular and significant children's stories, and they've made them into a script. They do not act it out. They do not memorize the lines, nor do they dress in costume. But what they do is go into the schools in groups of four to nine, and they animatedly read the story. We went into K-5, every K-5 classroom in Sartell. We reached nearly 1,000 students this year. One of my favorite reports from this program came out of Sartell. They always rave about how Sartell students are the most polite of all the students they go to. Don't tell St. Cloud. They always talk about what a rave they are. So this one young man, as they were getting done, he hung back behind the rest of the class, and he put his hand out and shook each one of the volunteers' hands and told them what a good job they did. I just think that's delightful. So we also assisted in school lunchrooms across the entire district. Our volunteers will help sling the hash, will help clean it up, will show the kids how to scrape their food and put their trays away so it doesn't muck up the dishwashers. And oh, yeah, we help clean up too. So we try to be a helping hand where we can. We also assisted your high school classes with CNA classes. Sometimes they needed patience, and we were more than happy to pretend that we had like a broken arm and we're calling everybody Sally today. We just had a blast with that. That continues to be one of those volunteer roles. As soon as I post it, it goes out right away. Another way that we help in Sartell is to thank the Sartell Police and Fire Department. Every year on 9/11, we're encouraged to support first responders. This last year, we gave out a goodie bag of stuff for them to share. We also are regularly part of your Sartell SALT Committee, Seniors in Law Enforcement Together. I do have 10 active seniors that are part of that program as well. So we always welcome, if Sartell has more needs, or a nonprofit you're working with has more needs, absolutely let us know. But I think nobody can tell the program any better than an actual RSVP volunteer. So I introduce you to Lori Allen.
Hello, Council and guests. I am Lori Allen, and my husband Doug and I have been Sartell residents for 50 years plus. We raised three beautiful daughters through the school system, and I was a Sartell teacher for 26 years. So I was, oh my gosh, there I am. I had the opportunity to, in my classroom, see the joy that Reader's Theater, that the volunteers who came in to tutor kids with math and reading, the children and the volunteers just reap so much benefit. The helpers in the lunchroom, you know, that first day of school with kindergarteners is a mess. And just the joy of seeing the volunteers interact with the teachers and the kids. So now I've been retired for nine years after I graciously got to teach for my grandkids, fourth grade, which was a thrill. And now I've come full circle. So now I am a volunteer with RSVP. I'm on the executive board also. But I do quite a few things, but my main gig is I cook lunch at Quaid Oak's House in St. In, wherever it is, St. Goss, that's St. Goss. Two, sometimes three times a week. And I also promote RSVP with the people that are coming in, who I am shadowing in the kitchen, and people are shadowing in the resident care area. And people, a lot of people haven't heard of RSVP, and when they hear about it, they just go, wow, really? Because most people are newly retired and looking for things to do. So I'm very thankful that I retired in May. In June, I started, I met with Jennifer at that time and filled out my form of oodles of things. I planted flowers at the MAC. There's so many things. But anyways, thank you for considering, listening to us actually, and hearing what RSVP is and promoting it because it's a wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
So our greatest form of recruitment is word of mouth, and how exciting that we get to be among all of you here. So if you know folks that are retirement age that would benefit from getting involved, feel free to pass on our program to them. The last slide here, just of course, it highlights our funding and the support, the financial support that we receive from the community, ranging from our federal grant to the local cities and the local counties. And we do get some grants through the United Way and the Women's Fund. And our funding is used to, of course, support our volunteers and through the recruitment process of an orientation, placement of volunteers, so that administrative support. We have four full-time staff persons, and we cover a four-county region with those four full-time staff. And then, as Tana mentioned, some of those others, direct supports to volunteers that we do, our funding goes to support the transportation reimbursement to help folks get to and from their service, that insurance. And then we do provide thanks and recognitions periodically to just let folks know that they are appreciated and with small gifts of appreciation as well. So we are turning to the city of Sartell for any financial support you might be willing to lend in the future. We would greatly appreciate that to continue this dynamic program into the future as our communities continue to age. And we know and we see that opportunities to get involved in volunteering do absolutely make a difference in the lives of each individual that is a part of our program. At this time, I will turn it over for any questions and answers that you might have of us.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Certainly a big impact within Sartell and 99 seniors, so that's awesome.
It is awesome. It is, with all of the communities that we serve, this is our second highest number with just running behind St. Cloud in the number of volunteers that we're supporting there.
Awesome.
So we love this community, and I just want to give appreciation to Lori Allen for being such a strong supporter of supporting our community and volunteering with us. So thank you, Lori.
Thank you. Council, second presentation tonight is Law Enforcement Community Awards and Swearing Ceremony. I'm going to do the swearing in first. These are two new officers from the Sartell Police Department. Kind of unique, Officer Emma Brown comes from us from the Stearns County Sheriff's Office as a CSO.
As a CSO and you did, did you do water patrol with him too?
Yeah.
And just graduated from the University of St. Cloud with her bachelor's, correct? And so, should we get to embark on this journey with Emma as a brand new officer and watch her grow and become the police officer that she'll be for the next decade, which is really cool for us in our department? And adversely, Officer Brad Cadillac, who comes to us with twenty years' experience from back in the county sheriff's office near Dear Minor because I also left the brownie farm in Cayman Blue and super excited to have him and his experience on night shift with a lot of our young and new officers, which will be really cool to watch you grow with them and have to each done as well. So, super excited to have you both on board. Thank you to the family members that came to support them. I can't guarantee that they won't come home at night with some tears in their eyes. They're going to change in this profession. Brad has probably already experienced a lot of that. His wife, who is here as well, and his son, who, are you the deputy?
I'm not.
Not okay. Brad's son has also sworn in as a county deputy. Two weeks ago, so Brad's been through a lot of that already, but he'll continue to grow and change. And what I can guarantee you is that you can kind of see the sea of blue around this room. We're here to support them through this journey, be there with them and also be there for you guys. So, thank you for being here tonight and watching them. I am going to go this way. If you both can raise your right hand. I state a name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution. Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Sartell. That I will faithfully, justly, impartially. Discharge the duties of police officer for the city of Sartell. To the best of my judgment and ability. So am I, God. And pinning Emma's badge on tonight is her mother and father and Brad, your wife. You guys would come up and your significant other slash daughter. Twenty-year veteran, of course. Give another round of applause. If I could get Council and Mayor to grab a photo with the officers and their family, that would be great.
Can we move over this way? So, we're in the middle.
Turn to your left. And then one more with all the officers. No, you guys are here. The two officers and then the rest of the PD staff that's here. Secondly, so we're also here today to recognize the service of now Lieutenant Todd Ackerman, the first reserve lieutenant ever to Sartell Police Department. He was our reserve sergeant for how many years now? So, we created a special position just for him. The first lieutenant promotion I've ever made with no interview process. That's how good I am, so. Todd has been volunteering for the city of Sartell for twenty years. Funny story about Todd and I. I was a young deputy in Morrison County, just got pinned myself and Todd was my barber. I remember him telling me that year, he just started this reserve unit thing in Sartell. I had no idea about it. Pretended like I was listening a little bit while I was trying to watch him do my haircut, not cut my neck with that straight edge. And here we are, almost twenty years later. And I never thought I'd be standing here doing this for you, but extremely proud to be recognizing you tonight for your service. I don't get a chance to surprise people often, but tonight Todd, I just told him he's being recognized. What he doesn't know is that he also received a meritorious service award from the Minnesota Chiefs Police Association for your service in the city of Sartell. And that was, I think, one of the easier nominations I've ever made and one of the easiest selection processes because of how we laid that out to them. And Todd has served over eight thousand dollars to the city of Sartell, over a quarter million dollars in value in that volunteer. He had one. But when you think about that over the course of twenty years and the fact that Todd is a state senator, office, trusted just like a full-time employee and every time we see him, he brings people's days. And the staff that are here to support him is telltale of that. And I couldn't be more honored to present you with that and be the first chief's commendation that I've ever made in the council, which is to you tonight. So, thank you for your years of service. We know you'll continue it and we're not anywhere, anywhere anytime soon. And we couldn't be more proud and appreciative to have you on the program. So, thank you. You guys come out front one more time. The mayor always picks him. He's like, you got this planned out. No, I don't. Sorry, right.
Awesome, thank you, PD. Both to our two new officers and to Todd for all the years of service and hours put in.
Got some really fun stuff to talk. You guys sure don't want to stay?
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. Again?
Come on, somebody.
We'll give them just a minute to clear and then we'll embark on our third special presentation for the night. All right, I think we're good. Got a quick video to share the impact of the Tink Larson Field of the Year Award. Think I'm supposed to talk during this? It's an honor today to celebrate a true community award, the Tink Larson Field of the Year Award, awarded to St. Cloud Orthopedics Field. Since nineteen ninety-three, the Tink Larson Field of the Year Award has been presented by the Minnesota State High School Baseball Coaches Association and recognizes fields that are maintained to the highest standards and show efforts of tireless dedication. This award pays tribute to a man whose dedication to baseball and field maintenance is nothing short of legendary. Tink Larson has been the steadfast caretaker of the Wasika Baseball Field since nineteen seventy, being the only person over the last fifty years to drag the infield and maintain the mound and home plate. Living just across the street from the field, Tink has ensured that it remains as immaculate as a professional field for over five decades. Today, we are all here to honor the twenty-twenty-three recipient of this prestigious award, St. Cloud Orthopedics Field. This recognition is not just for the field itself, but for the countless individuals whose hard work and dedication have contributed to its success. It is a testament to the spirit of teamwork and the collective efforts, community coming together to achieve something so remarkable. This award highlights the importance of maintaining excellence and value in the community involvement. It reminds us that behind every perceived field is a group of passionate individuals who work tirelessly to uphold the standards set by Tink Larson. Tonight, we'd like to honor some of these individuals. And I believe most are in the crowd here. I'll ask you to stand when your name is called. Mr. Mike Spanier. Now Councilmember Jed Meyer. Jason Mathiason. Brian Dayak. Randy Beckstrom. Pete Johnson. Tony Kruger. Austin Gugnberger. Jerome Nemnich. Jeff Amon. Bruce Thompson. Steve Gabrielson. Jim Gabrielson. The late Brent Weber. Sam Hemisch. Mark Dingman. Mary DiGiovanni. John Ross. Lisa Kramer. And Chad Ritter. Let's give them a round of applause. From all of us and from the community of Sartell, thank you so much for all the efforts and what you were able to do with this piece of property. It is absolutely amazing. Thank you. Do a quick pick for all those in front. All right. All right, that was our third and final presentation for tonight. I think that award is also being presented at the baseball Wednesday night, twenty-sixth. Sartell versus Sartell. All right, Council, open forum. We have one registered for open forum tonight. We have Greg Voler. Invite you to step to the podium. For open forum, we do offer three minutes to speak to the council. Council is restricted to not take action on the topic or to engage more of just a listening session for us. And it likely gets deferred to staff for recommendation. Floor is yours. If you want mine, sorry, last order of business, name and address for the record.
My name is Greg Voler. I live at two oh four Eighth Avenue North, three blocks from East here. My issue, or the question that I ask, is who is responsible for maintenance, maintaining the ordinances that the city of Sartell has? I have three photos that I'd like to present to you after I get done with this to take a look. I like to think of Sartell as being a proud place to call home. But not everybody does. The city does have ordinances, in fact. I have a copy of them. Every owner, leasee, occupant, or any other person having control of property shall maintain the vegetation growth there according to the following minimum standards. The one that's, you can drive a lot of neighborhoods in this town and find the grass and weeds more than ten inches tall. It talks in the ordinance that there is an employee of the city of Sartell, city weed inspector. Do we have one? Is that their sole job? I'm guessing probably not, based on what we see. One of the residents that I live near, a bunch of us neighbors called the city last year on the resident twice. They had to get a certified letter, I believe the city sends out a certified letter, to get their grass cut. Last year was a dry year. We're not looking at that this year. There's been multiple complaints on this one particular address in our neighborhood. One day I walked over to it and there were thistles as high as my belt. Thistles, that's an obnoxious weed. Please, take action on this. It's not going away and it's not just the weeds. One of the pictures shows a construction project. I don't believe there was ever a building permit in the window. There's a railing that's missing off of a deck that's more than six feet in the air. The deck railing is laying on the ground and laid there all winter long. After complaint, and I'm guessing they got a notification, the lumber on the yard went missing. But as of today, when I drove by it, there was still not a railing. There's an ordinance. I'm just about out of time. I'm going to bring these up, please. What can be done to have all these ordinances that the city has intact, enforced?
Thank you. So, Mayor, we can pass them down? Thanks. And Greg, looks like we got your email as well for follow-up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will share whatever the city council sends me with our neighbors as what will be addressed by you as the council coming through that email.
Thank you. Council, we're passing those on. Next item is approval of city council minutes. We have the June tenth regular city council meeting. I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have consent agenda. We have items A through I. I take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve, A through I.
Motion to approve A through I? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Council, no public hearings tonight. We have three items under old business. The first is the Mill District Redevelopment Study. Welcome.
Welcome. Well, thank you for welcoming me. It's, I'm glad to be back. It's been a while since I've been with you in the chambers, but that's not for a lack of not doing anything outside of this building. So, we could go to the first slide. Before I kind of go into what's changed and what's proposed and recommended, I just want to briefly talk about what we've done since we've last met. And that includes, we had a number of pop-up meetings in January, two- And that includes, we had a number of pop-up meetings in January, two very formal presentations along with a number of opportunities for people to come and go and view storyboards, ask questions, and, and just get a better idea of what, what we're looking at doing for the redevelopment of what was formerly known as the Paper Mill, or what we like to call at this point, Mill District. We've also met with Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation. We held a stakeholder forum in May, complete with all types of folks from around the area, financial initiative foundation, business leaders, and builders, developers, to provide input on where we're at, what we're proposing, and what things should be different or what ideas that they had. Additionally, your appointed bodies, Park Commission, Everything Sartell, Planning Commission, have also reviewed this document and asked lots of great questions, provide some great insight into the document. And though not necessarily part of the scope of this plan, you have had the results of your community study, which indicated a strong desire to have an area that you, that the community can go to and enjoy the river, have a downtown gathering spaces and more areas to recreate, shop, and, and live. And all of those, all of that information, all of that input, all of that feedback, really led to a number of very specific outcomes. And, and that's, one, one of the larger ones was just a slight modification of one of the concept plans within Phase Two, recognizing the need to perhaps be a little bit more robust and having more opportunities for flexibility. We also really took a look at the recommendations for implementation, what your next steps are as a city council to get this property moving and to get some, you know, efforts out there for the redevelopment. I think one of the most resounding things, whether it's from the input from the GSDC meeting or the pop-ups or this survey, was how affirming what we were doing and what we're proposing was, it was confirmed by those participants that decided to come and voice their opinion and share their thoughts. So that, as a planner, it certainly made me feel good that we were listening to the people correctly and that we were getting what they want right. And so that, of course, is still reflected within this plan. So we had a number of, of goals that we wanted to accomplish from the very beginning, starting almost a year and a half ago already, and that we really wanted a plan that reflects what the community wants on the property, have multiple options, have a flexible document and opportunities to achieve that community vision, making it a comprehensible and valuable tool. This isn't something that we, at least I hope, doesn't just sit on, on, on the shelf. It really is a guide for decision-making and serves as rationale for those decisions that you will make quite a few in the very, very near future. We recognize that this was a community-based planning activity, so we really took and wanted the input from the community along with you as a city council and your appointed bodies. And I think we made a really good, we made great accomplishments in making those goals come to reality with your plan. Just a reminder, the concept plans that we did and that you have, you have seen in the past really did have a number of different principles, key guiding principles, that wanted to make sure that we recognized the Mississippi River, that we're orienting all of our development towards the river, whether it's the heights of the buildings needing to be taller near the track and then cascading as you go closer to the river, and just making sure that we're orienting our view shed that, that the river essentially is the picture that we all are looking at when we enter the property. We wanted to make sure that we have multi-use, having uses such as residential, commercial, active and passive recreation, and office. We wanted an idea that this is gonna be an area that could be self-sustainable, that businesses will be supported by those people that are living in that area. We also wanted to make sure that we incorporated, you know, the historic significance of, of the mill, of the river, and even to a certain extent, the rail, and being able to, as these properties continue to develop out, as buildings are constructed and roadways are configured, that there's some reflection of the history of that property within that development. What else? Most importantly, probably, is that this really is a two-phase development. The first phase clearly already under, underway. The city has done an amazing job doing a lot of park planning. The engineering department has done beautiful plans for the trails. So there's definitely, you know, we're well on the way to the development of Phase One. Phase Two really is where it's going to be the belly of the development, where you're going to see the most concentrated development of the property into commercial, residential, office, or some similar use. So again, Phase One, as I just mentioned, well underway. There's going to be consideration for trails, an idea to have interim uses until the Phase Two really gets on its feet and starts development, so that we can ensure that there's traction and people are on the property and enjoying the property. Building the, the trail system off of the pedestrian bridge and just being able to recreate on the property and continue working towards, towards the development and planning for the internal structure, the internal access points, and the continued planning processes for purposes of redevelopment on Phase Two. Phase Two, we have two different concepts, somewhat very similar. Nothing's changed in terms of the Phase Two Concept One, again, mixed use, orienting a green area towards the river, utilizing a mix of uses vertically and horizontally, integrating shared parking, shared ponding to best maximize the utilization of that property. Phase Two was slightly altered to kind of create an area where there could be a significant user, whether it's a, a larger employer, it could be a convention center, it could be a sports facility, it could be any number of one of those things that really become a focal point of, of the property, and perhaps a lot of the development from around that is, acts as support. Nevertheless, this, the remaining developable property is still intended to kind of create that, that mixed use, that village-type feel with that main anchor. We have a number of chapters in this, on this, in the plan, none of which is probably more important than Chapter Five, which is the implementation section. And I, I mean, I, I think it's fairly obvious why implementation is important, but especially on this property, which has been vacant or torn down for over ten years. And there's just a growing need and desire for this property to be developed. So we just want to make sure that this plan doesn't sit on the shelves, that we take a look at those recommendations, make investments, and move towards some of those recommendations so that we were proactive in what it is that we see and that is developed out there, that we can really take advantage of public and private partnerships, similar to the one of the city received with Benton County most recently, and just to continue to maintain that momentum and excitement for the property. There's a lot of people in your community and outside of the community that are eager to want to see this property developed and take advantage of all the amenities that it could possibly have in the future. So the, of the twenty-eight or so plus recommendations or ideas for you to consider, what I did is really come up with your very high priority recommendations for, for consideration, for implementation. I've split them up into internal and external. Internal really are actions that I think are very necessary very soon, that could easily be accomplished with, with your current staff. It's a lot of the information that they're already doing, already, including working on the plans for alternative uses or alternative access points into the property, trailways, but also taking a look at some of your ordinances, including your shoreline ordinances, making sure that we're maximizing the developability of that site and, and being mindful of the ecological need to preserve the Mississippi River, but not necessarily doing it to a point that would be detrimental to the developable of the site. Again, kind of creating this balance between what it is that we can use on that property and, and making sure that we can understand the full value of the redevelopment of that property. Comprehensive plan amendment, I think at one point, when you are ready to move forward with the developer, the city will need to amend its comprehensive plan to create this, change the land use of this property from now, it's currently light industrial, I believe, and to a new use that would support future zoning changes and plan submittals on the property. So that's a, definitely something that you'll need to do, but this plan definitely provides that policy document, those findings in order for you to accomplish that. And then one of the other major things that the city needs to do quite, quite quickly is really establish those lines. In the plan, I gave hypothetical acreages of sixteen perhaps for the main developable site, but there's gonna be a point where you have this piece of property and you need, you're gonna wanna delineate what's going to be city, what's gonna be for the development in the future, and what and where do we want, and how do we fit the hydro facility into this mix as well. So I think establishing those lines early on and quickly will, will make future decisions that the city has to make even easier. Some of the external implementations, these are strategies or initiatives that perhaps require maybe specialized expertise, time, or additional resources beyond perhaps what the staff can, and can provide at this point due to ongoing operations of the city and doing everything else that the city needs at this time. Similar, you can essentially look at it as an extension of your staff, similar to your engineering consultants, having a consultant or having somebody onboard to work on this property solely and to provide that substance and movement that this property needs. And with those recommendations and with the external implementation, working with the rural crossing overpass construction, working with developer coordination of that, understanding and evaluating the concrete options. I think that is something that if you hire, bring somebody on externally, that this is something they need to hop on right away. It was a topic of conversation during the GSDC meeting. Of course, most of the participants said they want it out now and the city should pay for it, you know. So I think, while we appreciate that feedback, you know, we, I think the city just, does need to have all of its options in place and understand who should take care of that, who is responsible for that, and, and what are the costs and what is the planning that's involved in that. Working with staff, but really coming up with a finance options, creating a package, if you will, and then marketing that package is something that I think could really be beneficial so that developers, whether they're local, national, or state, have an idea of what they're all in or the city's all in may be for this property. And we've talked about this in the past, and we've already kind of dabbled it in a little bit by having the name Mill District, but really creating a branding and marketing plan that reaches a national level. I think that is something that is pertinent both for Phase One and Phase Two. The city's gonna want to see some, some significant development of interaction for that site and gaining attention for that site and all the trails, the docks hopefully, and, and all of those active and passive recreational uses that are, are being planned for, but of course also not only to bring in a developer with substance, but also then to continuously create a strategy and a plan for marketing that post-development. And I, I know in the redevelopment plan implementation area, I think I had five or six ideas of what you could do in order to really take that next step with the external recommendations. But my, my strongest recommendation is that you have some, you hire, you bring somebody on through RFP or, or what have you, a, a project management team or owner's represent, representative, representation. This, this person, this group, this team could really be responsible for handling negotiations, for marketing, coordinating subconsultants, if that might be the case, but really being that first frontline person to any developer or any group that might have an interest in this property. There's always going to be, all the decisions, final decisions will always, of course, be the city council, but it's really, again, acting as that, that, that extension of city staff in order to develop this property and to make sure that it continues to gain momentum and stay at the forefront of people's minds and, and overall excitement. I, I just do want to mention though, I mean, I'm not saying that staff couldn't do these external things. It's just, you know, sometimes it can be difficult and it's, to have a, a bit of a separation too between what it is that staff has to be working on and conversations that staff can have with developers might be a little bit different or might be limiting than what somebody that might be an extension of staff could be. So I just want to make that, that very clear. So that, that really is my, my most, you know, in, in the immediate or immediate recommendation for this plan. There's simple steps. There's twenty-eight other pages that I could go through, but some of them are five, ten years off and will likely change based on how this property evolves. But I think implementing these few will give an even greater picture of what is proposed to be developed, gives a clearer picture to potential developers of the property or those that might have interest in investing in the property, and provides some direction for staff and for the council on, on what some of the immediate next steps might be. They seem simple, but they will have a huge impact in how it is that this project moves along in the future.
Awesome. Thank you. Stand for questions at all?
Yeah, absolutely.
Council, any questions or comments?
Sure. Good. I, I don't know who the party was that, you did a great job putting this all together and crafting the dream, if you will, for what we, our vision that we had as a city. I think you captured it well and, and, and great work on your part. I was back down in Minneapolis, actually St. Paul, a couple of weekends ago for a grad party, and I was blown away by the Ford plant redevelopment. I grew up in that neighborhood, and if any of you have been down there, the old Ford plant on the border of Minneapolis-St. Paul. It's a river development on the bluffs, and they, I, I think it was United Properties, so they had deep pockets. But what they put in there is a fragment of what they put in there that would take over the mill site would be amazing. I mean, they've got a variety of housing styles. They've got parkways and pathways and, and, and creeks and it, it was retail and restaurants. It, it was amazing. And that, that happened in a matter of ten, fifteen years now, since the vision kind of got adapted by the city and they got behind it and the state stepped in and came forward and, you know, these big developers, and, and a way to draw that here is the challenge I see. I mean, to, to get it out there like that, but it does take fifteen years. And so the reality is, the more we do as a front end, as a city, in this planning and, and pushing on Benton County or whoever it is, it's gonna help with the roundabout and the access issues, that pays tenfold in the end. And like I said, it was ten years since I'd been back there and I drove into the neighborhood and I didn't even recognize it. I was just, it was, it's beautiful. And, and I hope someday that I come back here wherever I go, if I can, and see that development and just like, wow, that's pretty neat. So I think you captured the vision and it's just a matter of letting it develop and finding the developer, so.
I agree. Fantastic work. It's been so fun to see it come along. I know that I attended the stakeholder meeting and it was fun to see so much excitement in one room, and I'm sure you witnessed that at the pop-ups too and just, you know, community interest and questions. I guess my, one of the questions I have is how do we, you've put a ton of work into this, the city has put a ton of work into this. How do we move forward with this concept of like a representative, if you will, to, to move this forward or work it on a day-to-day basis? Understanding we need to protect the priorities of the, the city, which we've outlined in this plan and together as, as a council, while making that happen, I guess. Do you have any recommendations on that?
I mean, there's, there's a, a number of different options with any, when you get a consultant or somebody onboard, you can issue an RFP, you could, a staff could initiate it, or, or any number of things. But I think, I think whatever the council decides, I would just urge some, that there's some, that it happens somewhat quickly to keep things moving and to keep those successes in, in the. that there's some, that it happens somewhat quickly to keep things moving and, um, to keep those successes in, in the news and, and, uh, in the front of people's minds. So whether it is that you do a, an extensive RFP, um, I think what you're looking at, uh, from a project management or owner's representation, uh, there's not gonna be hundreds of them out there. Um, so it's gonna be probably a small group of people or firms that could actually handle something like this or that are experienced to accommodate this type of, 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 of role on behalf of the city. So, uh, we're looking for an edge, they're out there, there's, there's all kinds of, there, there's definitely some local and, and, and state and even national. Um, but I think that's what you're gonna be looking for and that's what you're gonna wanna see. And creating, uh, very carefully crafting what the exact roles and responsibilities are of that individual. Uh, you know, I think whoever kinda goes out and wants to take a look and figure out who this person or group is is gonna wanna chat with you all and with the new council members that could be elected in, in the fall and just to make sure that there's some gaining, some consensus of what it is that you wanna see, what the expectations of that person or group should be and, and just, you know, kinda firming up that, that, what that vision and what that should look like on, and how they should work within the bounds of, of the city as well and working with, with staff. So, um, kinda went off a little bit beyond what your initial question was, but I mean, I think there's, there's definitely a couple of different options, um, traditional and, and other ways to, to kinda tap into who these people are and who would be a great fit for the city and this project specifically.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
I think just a great comprehensive overview of everything that we had talked about and getting it caught, captured on paper and envisioned and directionality. Obviously you gave a lot of, um, kind of, uh, high importance items that you listed at the beginning here and I know Jill just asked the question, but I would love to hear from Anna, like, hey, what, what do you see as the next step? How do we keep momentum? I'm assuming you have some thoughts there on how we might be able to keep this thing, uh, moving forward with a lot of, uh, momentum.
Yeah, good question. Thanks for asking, Jed. Um, I echo Anita's comments of moment, like, we have to keep moving. We can't let this sit on a shelf and, and need to make some decisions and, and action points. I think we have a really good phase one under our belts here that it, the, the internal implementation items. I feel like we've got a great team that's already kinda been chipping away at a lot of those. But going forward, I, you know, I think the, the external pieces that we will need and then also the varying opinions, um, and some of which are gonna have some self-interest tied to them and some of which are gonna be local and national and statewide and from a variety of different sources, um, I do think having a external point person that has a really unbiased perspective and maybe just that one layer removed from staff and the political body might really significantly, uh, support our efforts here and help things move a little bit quicker than us trying to do it internal. Um, I, I see a ton of value to that, but I also think just the level of expertise and, and professional skills that they could bring, probably connections to, um, that they could bring to the table. And I, you know, Anita and I have talked a little bit too of, we do have a contract with Anita, uh, we're wrapping up phase one tonight effectively with approving, uh, this plan. But there is additional, um, uh, phases, I think we had up to three phases in her initial contract where we could even leverage Anita to go help us find that person and I could see a ton of value in that too. She knows this network, she knows, you know, this skill set that we're looking for, she can help kinda filter out, um, what we need. It adds just a little bit of a layer of separation between, you know, this is gonna be a tough decision because you are gonna have local interests, but you're also gonna have statewide and national interests. And so really truly having a little layer of separation and allowing a consultant to help us make that decision, um, of what's best for this site moving forward, um, and just having that layer of separation, I think, could be really advantageous. But finding that person or people or organization is gonna be really, really critical. Um, so having somebody help facilitate that process, I could see a huge advantage and then of course somebody who's already done and understands the vision, so you really don't have to catch them up to speed. It's, they know what we're looking for and help us find them. I think that could be a really, really great step forward to keep this momentum going. So, um, I, I just echo Anita's feedback and, and work here and have been able to watch her through this process. And as a staff, we have a lot of faith and trust in her ability to help us navigate this project too, so.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think I would support, uh, keeping the momentum going, getting someone outside. Not only can they help us with referrals and kind of networking, but also some of the prioritization, right? That we have to get some corner tenants, it looks like here and, uh, they might be able to help us really prioritize, uh, maybe our shorter timeframe to execute the larger plan, uh, so we can maybe put some short sprints and, and keep the momentum alive and, and keep it going, so.
I'd echo everything that, uh, Council said. I, you know, I think about that external project manager, uh, super valuable. Uh, within that or, or under that, I also think marketing, I think the more we can put into marketing now and getting that out there. Uh, Tim, I think, you know, you talked about the Ford plant. I can recall lots of media coverage over the redevelopment of that, right? And, and, and what that meant. And unfortunately, we're not going to get that or garner that here in central Minnesota. And so I think we then have to take the step forward to pay for that marketing to get it out at a national level. I think, um, one heck of a playbook that you've delivered to us of how do we go about developing this site. And I think, uh, you know, Council, as we think about, you know, budget into the future, I think the more we can put forward now on those marketing efforts, you know, that will, that will literally take years off the redevelopment, uh, rather than potentially letting this sit on the shelf, saying, hey, we can't do it yet. At some point, we're gonna have to buck up and do it and, uh, and, and I think the time's now, shot clock, the shot clock has started, we own it, so. Thank you very much. Um, again, love having you a part of this project and bringing you back to your roots.
It's been a pleasure. It's sad that it's almost nearly ending in, in terms of, you know, partially my role, but, um, so excited to have helped you create a policy document that guides land use and hopefully to future decisions. And I can't wait to come back here and, and, and go to a couple of grand openings and have a beer on the patio and dock and whatever. So, um, but thank you very much for the opportunity.
Fun to see you geek out on this. Uh, Council, we need a formal motion to approve the study.
I will make a formal motion to approve.
Is there a second to Tim's formal motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita, before you step down, Mayor, just for clarity's sake, from staff perspective, are you okay? We do have this contract with Anita, are we, after tonight's discussion, are we okay with having her using that contract to go find an owner's rep? Are we, to keep that momentum going? Am I hearing that accurately to leverage under the current span of her contract?
Yeah, I'm seeing head nods. I'm wondering if it might make sense for us to group in a workshop just to understand what we want in that, right? Or what we're all?
Well, Anita, I think you could help facilitate that too of just making sure that when she goes out, it's what we all want. But I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly, that we're okay having her lead that cause on our behalf.
Think you're the best equipped.
Awesome. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Uh, Council, we have two more items that are old business, uh, related to each other. The first is rezone in variance of TTT Housing LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is, um, a two-step request, um, that was submitted by Triple T Housing, the applicant. The first is the rezone request and the second is the variance. I will take those separately, um, as action items. So first, for those of you that were not here at the last meeting, I did present fully on the rezone request from, well, you can see here in front of you, that is depicted off of Roberts Road in what is now Beetle Boulevard. The request to rezone from B two general business district to R three multifamily housing. I just, uh, also depicted to the right there, the east, that we did rezone, um, the property there from B two to R three back in twenty-twenty-one, just for reference. Um, we did host the public hearing at the last meeting, so we have accomplished that requirement that we need to do. Um, we also did, I presented this to Planning Commission on June third of this year and the rezone was, uh, approved four to zero with one person absent. So just keep that on the top of your mind, that this was presented to Planning Commission. There was a bunch of discussion, really great questions. Um, and we also have Megan here that is a representative of the applicant to discuss any of the specific building-related questions and reasoning on why this location as well. So I'm not going to go into super detail regarding the rezone because we did that last time and I hope that, um, the, for those of you that weren't here, did your homework, which I'm sure you did because I've got a bunch of questions already. But just so you're aware, we are rezoning and, or we are requesting to rezone to R three multifamily housing. And Rob, if you go to the next slide, some of the questions that I've received since this was presented to council and even out Planning Commission, um, is related to future land use and what this means for other properties surrounding this. So that you can see here that our future land use designates this area as town square. However, we have not actually zoned any properties as town square. This resulted from the twenty-sixteen comprehensive plan of establishing a downtown area for Sartell. Economies have changed, different things have changed. We, um, are now seeing with any commercial or business developments that they're really looking for high visibility, high traffic counts. Um, and off of Roberts Road right now in Beetle Boulevard, that it, you're not going to see those high traffic counts, um, or the high visibility that you would along Pine Cone Road, so just be aware of that. Um, if you also look at the feature land use of the map, in front of you, the red is, um, business district or general business district. And then the, uh, darker orange is medium to high-density residential as well across Roberts Road. So you can see that there is some variation of zoning districts there. I will let Megan from Triple T Housing go over the project briefly, um, and then we'll get into any questions and discussions that you have.
Hey, Megan Carr. Um, good evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but at a high level, um, we're looking at a forty-eight unit apartment building. It would be a mix of one, two, three and four bedroom units. Um, I know there's been a lot of multifamily built in Sartell the last couple of years, but our project group is focused on individuals making sixty percent area median income and lower. And so that amount, if you can bear with me for one second here, for a family, oh gosh, excuse me. For a family of four, that would mean that they would need to make under fifty-eight, just about fifty-nine thousand dollars a year. So we're looking at, um, families that are, would be challenged to find housing that would be affordable for them in the city of Sartell or, um, individuals who are moving out of their single-family home or, um, duplex looking for rentals, um, agent, you know, looking for that next step to not have to maintain a yard, um, that maybe are on a fixed income. Um, there'll be, you know, some one bedrooms for that or two bedrooms, um, whatever works for them. We have developed properties in St. Joseph, uh, we have two properties there. We are going to be starting construction hopefully later this year, early twenty-twenty-five in the city of Wake Park, um, right along the new bridge that just, or not, well, new bridge, but it reopened, um, just a couple of days ago, actually. And then, uh, we have several properties in St. Cloud. We have, um, one property in Sartell, it's ten single-family homes that we acquired, um, from a nonprofit that went defunct and those are, remained at affordable levels. We, we had them completely interior and exterior and finished the basements, um, in two thousand fifteen and sixteen and worked with the city of Sartell staff on the Small Cities Development Program and, um, the Minnesota Department, um, deed, basically. And, um, I think locally, uh, St. Michael, we are located in Albany, we have several properties. Um, and so we're looking to, we've been looking at city of Sartell, um, we've been, we had discussions back when Anita was staff here about trying to find a site. Um, we're local to Wake Park, that's where we're office out of. TTT is one of our development groups, um, that was recently selected by Minnesota Housing for a site in Rockford and Wake Park. Those projects would be the first, um, passive house-designed or FIES buildings that are financed by Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And this, um, building would hopefully follow that, um, lead, which means that it is a more energy-efficient and healthier living environment for the residents and for the long-term viability of the building. That's a little bit about it, but I'm sure you have lots of questions. Um, I, the one thing I will note is we did look, this is a competitive application. So we did look at the surrounding areas that are already zoned multifamily. And because of transportation, we had to be so close to a transportation line that operates so many times a day to get points on that area. And none of the sites that are zoned multifamily currently, um, meet that requirement. They're very close, but they're just like point one mile away from meeting that if we push the building as close as we could to the property line and tried to make it work. And so this site does meet the transportation requirements. It's really close to, um, Coburn's, which is a great amenity for the residents. Um, and it's, you know, it's got, it, the bus line runs right in front of that property. Um, the current stop is right by the gas station, but, um, hopefully maybe they would look to add one or, or, or move it somewhere in between. So, yeah, I'm happy to, like I said, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for the applicant before we get into discussion? Jill?
Just one, thank you. Um, I understand from Carrie, um, there would be access to Roberts Road then to access that bus stop? Is that correct or that's a comment that's been?
I, I think, um, I don't know, okay, with the plan be to extend the sidewalk along the right side of Roberts Road as well? Yeah. So we wouldn't access it vehicularily unless we had to for like emergency, uh, vehicles. We've done that in other where we put up like a temporary, um, barrier if that's needed, uh, that stays up all the time unless a fire truck has to like go through it.
Sure, sure. But for, for people looking to, okay. So for people, people looking to take the bus, they would have access to?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think, sorry.
Tim?
Um, I like the concept, uh, and you kind of partially answered the question of with, we have multiple sites that are, are already zoned for multifamily, um, without this brain damage of trying to rezone and, and find it. Um, is it purely based on the transportation location? So would it be less of a battle to go back to Metro Transit and say, can you help us out with route selections? I mean, is that even possible? I, you, Brian, you might be our, Jed Hoover's on that. I don't know how that works, but if we had something that was a site that fit and didn't have to rezone, it was R three, um, this building goes in, could we figure out a way to qualify it through metro bus somehow? Or is that, uh, even an option?
Yeah, well, and, um, I'm sure you've had conversations there and.
Yeah, we act, so our applications due July eleventh, so we have not had conversations to that. But traditionally, um, Minnesota Housing has not provided points for a non-operating, like, uh, unless it's a planned future bus stop that's in a, in a plan already, like, um, there's a light rail, go, well, eventually that might open through Eden Prairie. Um, and if you're on that route that's currently under construction or if you're on the route for the, um, light rail that's headed up through, uh, potentially North Minneapolis, those are basically the only areas where if it's a future location, they would accept it, um, unless it's under construction or it is like imminent, like within the next couple of months. It's very unlikely Minnesota Housing would accept those, the potential that a bus stop might be relocated.
And your deadline's the eleventh for that?
That's the deadline, yeah. And this, so to give you an idea, um, hundreds of applications throughout the entire state of Minnesota compete for the funding that's available. So this project would compete with Greater Minnesota, um, the other communities. So that would include, um, you know, S- St. Cloud, it would include Rochester, would include, um, Duluth, it would include Mankato and then it would include all random places, Princeton, if there's one, you know, submitted there, would include, you know, Bertram if the one, like, it's all over and it's a matter of what developers submit. Um, for the transportation points, it would be a loss of seven points, which on any given application year, the difference between being selected and not is usually around one or two points. So to have a loss of seven points would be, make this project probably not able to have a chance of being funded.
Is that a yearly application?
Yeah, we do apply annual, uh, well, we submit applications an- annually. We've been doing tax credit developments since nineteen ninety-five, um, and we've been really fortunate the last several years to have a fifty to seventy-five percent selection. Last year we submitted two applications, both were selected. Um, the year before, we submitted I think one or two applications and one was selected. Um, year before that, we submitted one and was selected, year before that, I think it was three and all three were selected. So we've had a pretty good track record of identifying sites, I mean, it's no guarantee, we don't know what everyone else is submitting, so there's no guarantee, but we definitely um, we spent a lot of money to put these applications together, and so we, we only select sites that we think are viable sites to potentially get selected and are also our communities who want to be in long term, because we hold our buildings long term. Um, the first project we developed was um, in nineteen eighty five and we still own that. And we renovate them as we're, we're able to, so.
And so, uh, with the other sites in Sartell that you've looked at that didn't qualify for them, how far did you go down that path with looking at those sites for viability before you you disqualified it for the transportation?
Um, well, we've been looking at sites for over ten years, so we've looked all over the city, um, had lots of discussion with staff, we've looked um, at sites that are available, um, we originally looked at a site near Walmart and Sam's Club, um, that's privately owned, it's right next to, um is it a regional park, is that what it is, yeah, like a regional park, um, it's not currently in the city, um it will be soon or it maybe has been already, but I think it's getting annexed into the city. And we thought that would be a great site, we weren't able to come to terms with the current landowners on that. And so we, we were looking at that site, we were running through that, at the same time, we were looking at all these various sites around um, Pine Cone, we looked, I think, at almost every single site in this area that's undeveloped right now. So, um, yeah, it is, it is a challenging kind of trying to fit a puzzle piece into the site and then also recognizing, um, you know, what would make a long term viable project, you know, having right next to Coburn's and walking distance to a grocery store and restaurants. Um, gas, there's banks there, there's, um, you know, medical's not that far away. Um, we feel like it would be a really great opportunity and there's obviously a lot of multifamily nearby, but none of it meets the affordability, um, that we're aware of. Or or if there is some, it's very little of the multifamily that's developed there.
I, I, I agree with the site lo- location, um, but my, my concern is that we put a, a lot of time and effort into our zoning and planning a couple of years ago and we intentionally um identified sites that were R three that we felt that were agreeable with the community and and the council at the time. Um, uh, this came in at B two and hoping that we would get some more business and retail or restaurant, whatever in that area. Um, I, I agree with the, the concept, we need affordable housing in this town, in, in Sartell. Um, w- we need to provide that even to draw workforce for additional growth within our med tech area or whatever large employers that are coming to town. That is a basis of points as well for their potential site selectors. Um, my concern is that we have a number of sites that work or we picked for high density. Um, how do we comply to that initial plan that we all agreed on and and voted and and accepted as a city? And then to continue it, this is two or three times now that we've been approached to change, may- maybe our plan was off a little bit, but change our zoning to multifamily. Um, so I, I, the greater concept is, is the city, as I see it, we need to discuss where is our R three zoning, is it wrong, is it right? But that's a whole nother can of worms and I hate to tell you that's not gonna happen before Ja- July eleventh. Uh, and maybe a year from now, I think there might be some opportunity, but I'd have some concern about just changing every single time. Um, somebody comes forward with a concept and it's a great concept, it's needed. I just wish it was in the right zone area for us, um, and I'm open for discussion, I guess, to help you guys.
Maybe before we get into too much discussion, do we have any other questions for the applicant, so we can flush out questions and I guess have a basis for discussion? Not seeing any.
I'm happy to come back up if anything comes up.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I'll take any questions that you may have for me, um, great questions, I did wanna highlight that there for the pedestrian accessibility, there are sidewalks on both sides of Beetle Boulevard, we did require the adjacent property um to install and construct a sidewalk along Roberts Road, so we would um, request that as part of the site plan comments, um to extend that sidewalk just um for the pedestrians and safety for them as well. Um, for this site, that was one of our initial comments that we had to the applicant, um, when we just started discussions of this site. And Rob, if you could just go to the first slide where it shows the current zoning.
Thank you.
Um, I did want to highlight something from in our comprehensive plan and I know it is outdated. Um, it was back in two thousand sixteen, generally, um, there are ten to fifteen years. And we're getting to the end of that lifespan, um, where we will most likely need to enter in discussions of amending the comprehensive plan, um just due to changes that we've seen, obviously in this area, specifically Town Square, like I stated. That isn't going to be here, we have now shifted, we just discussed the mill site and how we want that to be, um our town center and something that is a regional draw for this community. It was a great idea for the Town Square in this area, mainly around the Round Barn that is privately owned. And we have no um control over this, um, selling that property and developing that since it's privately owned by a family. Um, right now, so, just a few things of that. I do understand that there is some reluctance to rezone piece by piece. Um, however, we also do need to look at um, and evaluate that planning commission did look at this, a lot of discussion of and reluctance to rezone for sure, because we do feel like we are piecing this all together in this area. But there is a need for multifamily housing and especially the surrounding multifamily is market rate, um, and with all the discussions of the med tech and what that's going to be, it's where are people gonna live that's affordable, so I do understand that and I think we all do understand that is a need. Um, and I think we do need to have a discussion of where are we wanting to no longer entertain rezoning from B two to R three or to any other type of higher density residential. But within our comprehensive plan that, yes, we need to look at amending, it does call out, um that residential growth should be in a compact manner to ensure that it is accessible and that it has city infrastructure that um, sustains that development and like I said, there are city utilities there, we recently constructed Beetle Boulevard with sidewalks on both sides, we would require sidewalks um along Roberts Road for that transportation requirement as well to get them there safely and effectively, um, but I'll take any other questions that you have specifically for me relating to the rezon request.
Council, any questions for staff? Jill?
Can you walk us through the portion of the parcel and how that would rezone would look, I know those were some of my concerns last week and I know we've heard it, but I would love to talk about it a little bit more.
Absolutely, good question, Rob, go to the final slide, please, sorry for making you bounce back and forth. Um, but you can see here and within the resolution, um, or the ordinance that would that's in the packet, it calls out the legal description saying a portion of Outlet A and I'll just walk through that. You can see on the screen there and I did print it out for you as well, if it's easier to see on paper. But they are proposing just to rezone, um, what would be the new property line, um. Going back, this will need to be, it is just preliminary platted right now, it will need to be final platted, so that would have to come back to you, um, for approval, but they are just requesting to rezone what they're developing. So, um, it would only be where this development is, that would be R three. And then the remainder of Outlet A, which would stay Outlet A until it would be final platted for that said development would remain B two general business district. Um, and that was the request by the applicant, only to rezone a portion of that. They are working with the property owner on the purchase agreement and who facilitates these applications and doing the legwork of this and who facilitates the other legwork of completing the final plat, which from my understanding, the property owner, um will do the final plat, um, and s- submit those applications if and when we'd get to that portion of the development. Another highlight I just wanted to discuss is when we're talking Town Square, what this was ideally um, laid out as in the comprehensive plan, supported up to twenty units um in acre, which is more than what is proposed in front of you, um, R three is, uh, five to twelve units in acre, um and they're within that threshold, it just goes up on, it goes by, well, how they lay out the property and the unit size and layout, whether it's one, two, three, four bedrooms, so what they are proposing is actually less than what it is guided for with in Town Square because it does allow multifamily. Um, but we've obviously went away from that, um, zoning use, so. I don't know if I answered your question, but they are proposing just to rezone what they're developing in front of you, um, so the property lines there would dictate the R three and the rest would stay B two.
Jill?
Carrie, can you recap historically? We, since the, uh, specific properties were designated R three, we've rezoned once, is that correct? And you had that on one of the slides, I think?
Yes, um, if you go to the first slide or have um, I did lay that out there, we did rezone that recently to R three in twenty twenty one, right after um, we rezoned the city, um, and that was, that was in, um that was with the Leesack Township when we were looking through the O A A and the orderly annexation agreement and really aligning Leesack Township with Sartell in orderly growth. Um, so that was done at that time, um, and the request was submitted in twenty twenty one now where that arrow is, as you're driving along Roberts Road or if you've checked out the new apartment complexes, those, um, are being rented right now, um, hundred and fifty two units were put on that property, so.
And it was kind of a continuation of the apartments next door, was that right?
Yeah, it, it was just another phase of the Heritage Apartments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Um, maybe you know this answer, I'm not sure, the parcel just below Roberts Road, um, which is zoned R three. Is that, is there a uh developer working on that or where, do we know where that parcel sits from our development?
Yes, and that unfortunately is complex and, um some of you may be aware of the situation, we have brought that specific parcel to a few workshops, um. When the, the city was rezoned essentially and we really did look at what makes sense from um, an R three, uh, high density residential outlook. Um, that was indicated as, um, obvious that it, that would probably be an expansion of that high density residential. So when that was rezoned to R three and no longer Town Square, the current property owner um, had some issues with how that rezone affected how many units they could put on said property, the setbacks. And we have had discussions with the property owner and their broker and realtor. It is currently for sale, but if that comes forward with the same property owner that, um, currently owns it they have expressed that they most likely will ask for a variance, um, for building height to match what was allowed with Town Square. Um, so there is some history behind that and really wanting to mirror what was Town Square in getting that increased density, um, in another floor added. However, there's been nothing formally submitted.
Thank you. Council, any other discussion?
Or discussion or questions?
Sorry, questions, thank you. Um, in order to get into discussion, I would look for a motion and, but before I do that. Uh, we've got them listed here as both rezone and variance, do you want them all as one?
Uh, take them separate, please, um, and with having one person absent, um, we would just be looking for the simple majority, so I would need three of uh, a yes or a no for this to either be approved or denied.
Uh, council, we'll take the rezone first, without a rezone, there's no need for a variance. Um, is there a motion for the rezone? Is there a motion to move the rezone from R two, excuse me, B two to R three?
I, I think I expl- expressed last week that I, I don't have a pro- problem with the location. Um, little concerned about splitting that, hearing Tim's new feedback, you know, hearing that as well of like, hey, we don't wanna piecemeal this, cause that actually leads to some of the concerns that I had. With that said, I'm, I'm fine with that, I think the housing project is needed, so I would make a motion to rezone.
We have a motion to rezone. Uh, all second just to get, so that we can get to a discussion point, uh, so we have a motion and a second to rezone discussion. Um, recognize, uh, council member Lewandowski is absent, um, he did share some feedback with me. Essentially sharing that his position doesn't change or hadn't changed, um, from last meeting. Uh, I would agree a lot with, um, what council member Ellis offered, um as far as it's an absolute need in our city. It just, I think the corridor makes sense, I don't know that this particular for me, I look at Beetle Boulevard as, as that, uh, separation line or that transition from R three over to B two or to some other type of, um, classification or zoning. Think if this parcel were to move, I look at all the other parcels south of it and they likely then would move to R three. And it makes me pause to say, we should think about, uh, whether that's through the comp plan or continued discussion, so that it's not so spot zoning and it's more, hey, what does that look like, I think Carrie, you talked about it, um, last meeting and I think we've all thought it, it maybe hit me a little more last meeting of just hey, we're probably not gonna have a Town Square in this geographical area like was once planned, right? We've got the Mill District and I think that's spot on. But then it really forced me to pause and think, okay, if it's not gonna be there. One of the big reasons we were told we should do multifamily there over the years is that rooftops drive commercial and retail growth. And if retail, commercial growth isn't gonna be driven there, then what is the future of that area? Um, and I, I, I guess I don't want to create a domino effect here before we can have that broader conversation and and discussion.
Um, thank, thank you for that and I, I just wanted to, to, um circle back to what council member Ellis was, was speaking about, because I think, um, I think that when the R three designations were made, that was before, I know it was before your time, before my time, so the recap is helpful for us. And I think that there's a strategy outlined there for the community as far as which properties would be R three. Um, we've obviously made one consideration of that in my time on council, which was an extension of kind of an extension of an existing pro- project, but, um, I wanna be genuine to the strategy that was outlined at that time, and I think the more we continue to rezone we get away from that without understanding the long term ramifications of that. Um, meaning there are a lot of apartment complexes in that area, I don't know from a safety standpoint what planning recommendations are or safety recommendations are, um, and I just want us to be a community that looks holistically at that before we jump into something, is it needed a hundred percent, and I think you've outlined a, a, a great plan aside from the current location from my perspective, I appreciate your comments, Carrie, too, um, as far as the Town Square and where things are moving, but to Ryan, mayor, the mayor's point, um Mayor, the mayor's point, um I think we need to to just look at that a little bit more holistically before we jump into something.
I would uh follow suit in in. Comment, those comments, um I I do see the the location as. Potentially being R three, I mean, the density is there, there's supportive services, it's a high um. Growth potential for multifamily there and or affordable housing, I don't have, and I expressed earlier that I we. Dire need of this type of housing in town, um where maybe it comes back to this location. I just don't know if we can, just off the cuff on on account, without looking at the broader picture. Make it rezone, and I know we did this on the R, the R three twenty twenty one, we changed that, but their their. Case was a bit more compelling, they had plans initially in place and actually in motion, that's what they told us. Um to build that and then the moratorium came down, the moratorium froze them out of finishing their. Apartment complex at the time, so they came back with a a a valid excuse saying, we've had this planned all along. We were surprised you jumped us by putting a moratorium on place, they came back right after that and said, we still wanna build this. Can we make an exception, and that's, am I talking about the right property on that, does that ring a bell? Um so I, that was the. The basis of the rezoning on that, because I felt that they were already in play, I got the story, I got the history. Um this one's a little bit more um challenging. Does the site work for the property, yes, does it, does it? Is it needed, yes, but what I just had the reservation about is piecemealing our our three. Without looking at comprehensive city in general and where we want it to be. Um but even though, you know, this might pass or might not pass. I encourage you to come back to Sartell because your property and your solution is perfect, if if we can go to bat and figure out a way to get. Metro Transit to comply and help with the seven points that you're missing. Um by all means, we'll we'll work on that one way or another, but. Because i- in overall global development of a city, these are core pieces that we need to look at as a city and. Keep in mind that we can't be all single family, we can't be all multifamily, um how do we spread that out? And I think that was part of the the plan that when we studied this initially was how how do we. Look at the city as a as a whole and not necessarily pigeonhole all the multifamily in one location. Um Sartell's unique in a way that we don't have a lot of other large unit apartments around, I mean, we have some scattered, but. Um lately, the new development has come in this one layer area, and so if I can. Work on this and, you know, sadly, I I know July eleventh is so close that. It it probably isn't gonna happen if we try to delay it any further, but um I think it's a great solution, it's needed. Where it goes, it just needs to be a little bit more hashed out in in our council chambers somehow.
Um I would echo that, not to keep piling on, but um city Sartell serves um as one of the um. Cities who leads Metro Bus, and so I do think as Metro Bus is organizations going through. Kind of some consulting redesign now, understanding what routes look like, um I think this whole global conversation. Needs to be part of that study so that they understand where we would be planning additional multifamily. Um affordable homes, affordable units as well. Um before, we've got a motion, um motion was to approve the rezone. Uh presented to us tonight, uh before I call for vote, any other comments, questions?
I I would just say that I think this location, um again, I I haven't had a problem with that, I think is a big need in the community, I I would fully understand. And appreciate their perspective of the comprehensive plan and obviously being newer here. I I think this might be an area that we would find from the comprehensive plan that we would look, given uh kinda what I see here, so. Um yeah, I with that, I would just say I appreciate the comments, take it back to feedbacks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, aye.
Aye.
Uh that fails um three to one. Uh counsel, with that, uh no need for variance request, or is there still a need for variance request?
Correct, um with that failing, um the variance request wouldn't be able to be followed through because it isn't the correct zoning. And then um the next item would also be irrelevant as well.
Um for process sake, do we want?
Um we should do um.
Just table them or?
No, we should do a formal formality vote, um and just on the basis of not meeting the current zoning requirements.
Okay, um I'll mo- I'll make a motion to deny the variance request due to inaccurate. Or uh. The incorrect zoning. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, um does anyone understand, formality say power, okay. Uh all those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh that motion carries to deny the variance. Uh do you want us to act on the community grant to table it or?
No, um I. I think we should act on it, if we would have future applications, we would um have them resubmit um similar application.
Counsel, I'll make the motion to deny the community grant state housing aid funding request. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second for that denial, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's denied as well.
I just have um one formal question, if the applicant would have any questions um for you. I'll hear, is that okay if it's funneled through me to get out to you guys for any questions that you may have?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Solidations, boss.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Uh counsel, we are on to department reports, first up is administration.
Mayor members of the council, you have my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for admin? Uh Anna, real quick, um I know in your memo to us, um there's a lot of chatter of. Of school district and we're not gonna get into that, but IT services is something we contract in school. Uh your memo is correct, July, end of July, we have through, should no action be taken on their side?
Um yes, if we, we do have, our contract with the um IT would be limited down to. One employee, Kyle Breckwright, who is the IT di- director, he holds a smaller separate contract from his employment contract. Which would's, which is not a part of the twenty-two contracts being reviewed, um so that contract would still exist, but all the staff with. Below him would no longer exist, so we, him and I have connected and um believe that we could function up until. July thirty-first, we'll revisit at that time, um mostly because he'll need to find employment.
Sure.
Um and so he would look for employment full-time elsewhere, but also we will need more assistance than one person. And he doesn't hold the skill set of, he has level one, level two, and level three technicians underneath him, um that will all be. Uh without positions as of July one, so we would be only operating off of Kyle until July thirty-first, which is just an arbitrary date that. Him and I have assigned to it, um and after that, uh would be facilitating finding a different vendor.
Thanks for the clarity.
Can I just get, just to piggyback on that, have we started the process, I know in your memo you stated there is. A a projected amount that 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 we would have to allocate for IT services in the event that that's what occurs. Um have we started to look at that any closer or make plans for an RFP is my first question, I guess my second part of that is. Is the school IT contract on a yearly basis, like a calendar year or on the school year or?
Yeah, so it's on a calendar year, but um they would effectively not be honoring the contract anymore by providing staff. And so it would be terminated, um or we could terminate for cause.
Have we already paid in full for it for the year?
Um so actually, the current contract ran through t- the end of twenty twenty-three and we're on a month-by-month basis afterwards.
Got it.
So we're currently on that month-by-month basis, we'd only need thirty days to.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to look for any kind of prorated refund or anything?
Yeah, and we have not, um we have some RFP templates that we have drafted, we had looked at going out for RFP at one point. Prior to being with the school that we could leverage, so that part of it, um we definitely have available as far as. Actual responses to RFPs, we don't have any, we have a general estimate of what we believe those costs would be, given what we know. We get out of a service today from all the different levels of technicians, um and then also. Uh Kyle and the school manage our fiber network, our complete fiber network for the city. Um so finding a vendor that can do all of those things and then also obviously private sector versus uh the school doing it for us. Um our current contract is approximately forty thousand, um.
Fifty-nine thousand.
Yeah, and so we, that, yeah, yeah, adding on the fiber, so fifty-nine thousand if you add on the complete management of our fiber network, um. And we believe that that would, it would likely be closer to a hundred thousand, I I mean, it's just the nature of. Finding I, an IT professional that uh could facilitate that, but we've not, that's purely an estimate that was provided to us, um. We we've not formally gone over RFP, so we'd have to do that and try to facilitate finding somebody that could provide those services and. Um and and Kyle has uh informed us that he would be willing to help us facilitate that conversation. In advance of July thirty-first, should he not be renewed into a full-time contract or any of his staff. Um so I do think he'd be very helpful through that process and us finding someone, but it will inevitably be significantly more expensive than what we have today.
Have we made any plans for where we would get those dollars?
Um no, um no, when we set our budget at the beginning. Or the end of last year, it was with the intention of being with the school. Throughout this entire um year, uh we did have the vacancy of the finance HR supervisor. Which did free up some dollars for us to uh potentially utilize those dollars for IT services, so uh we'll just have to look. Amongst the general fund to see where we can save some dollars throughout the rest of this year to utilize for IT services. Which would be a high priority of ours.
And then we, for twenty twenty-five budget, uh it would be our goal that we. Get RFP responses and have that estimated budgeted amount before setting the preliminary levy, cause it would, it would. L- largely have the greatest impact twenty twenty-five budget and going forward, because that would be where you'd see the bulk of what that increase would be. I and we have worked with several other IT, private IT vendors in the community and outside the community, so we're aware of. Well aware of what the resources are that are out there, it's just a matter of going out for out for RFP and that transition of knowledge, um. Right now, every single aspect of our IT network is is held by the school district.
It's a lot of money, is there, I guess, and I don't know, we wanna wait till roundtable, but just a question for counsel, is there any? Any willingness or tolerance to put some or ask staff to put some sort of. Um impact statement together or letter um to share with the school board, because I think. That's a significant amount of money that we're gonna have to identify. Um just a thought.
Any thoughts on that?
I would, I would agree, I I mean, I don't know if we need to make an impact statement, but I think the discussion level should be. Um. A city without IT solution in today's world is a dangerous thing. Um I mean, from across the board, so um. There needs to be a resolution, we need to be able nimble enough as a city to to pivot and go a different direction, but. It it's not without cost for sure, so.
I guess I'm not, um I think the gravity of the situation is hopefully felt on on both sides of the topic. Um I know I've had some individuals reach out and I I don't know that I feel it's. Um our place, they're demo- they're in a democracy just like we are, and I think I'm hopeful we'll find common ground, um. Think anyone that's reached out to me, that's why I said is is uh discussion debates healthy in a democracy and there's gotta be common ground, let's focus there. Um I'm very hopeful that IT services is the common ground that everyone should rally around or support. Um but I think hearing that staff is comfortable at the end of July, um gosh. I'm very hopeful that this is resolved by our next council meeting and. Maybe, I guess my mind would change at that point, if if we don't have a resolution by the next one, I would be inclined to to offer that. But I'd also encourage all of us as elected officials, I mean, we certainly can reach out to individual board members and share our own feedback. Um I've chatted with their uh board chair a number of times and. I don't know, that's where I'm at on it, I, I guess last thought I would have, sorry, is. Hearing we're month-to-month now, I I think once we, again, hopefully we get through this quickly as a community, but. Once we're through that, uh I think it'd be most prudent to reevaluate our contract with them. Um and set up a contract, the the city is covered by the district and. We're not left in limbo when the district's having some of these tough conversations, um to the extent we can do that, I'm not sure, but I'd love for us to explore that rather than. Staying in the evergreen month-to-month situation we're currently at.
Yeah, I think that's where mine was going, it was more about fixing the problem that we had, right, of I'm not having the support and services, how much is the contract on a monthly basis?
Yeah, four thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars per month.
Per month, so we're we're really talking about a half year, five months, ten thousand a month. Uh so it's it's an additional five thousand, so it's twenty-five thousand for this year if we were to rehire someone by August. Um you know, that that's not small numbers, but it's not, you're 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 insummeable, and I when I hear Ryan talk a little bit about like. Having the month-to-month gives us less recourse typically, uh than we might have, although it may not, I don't know if we've had our attorney look at the actual contract. And the month-to-month clause is part of that contract, oftentimes if they're unable to facilitate, there is an exit clause, but there's also maybe some financial recovery. From some of that as well, not that we wanna go there, but you know, other ways to try to facilitate that to Ryan's point of. No matter what happens over the next month or two, it would be nice to make sure that we sure that up going into the future to ensure that we have continued service. Uh or the ability to pay for continued service, should the person offering that service not be able to provide it for whatever reason that might be, which today I hope is. Very unique and doesn't happen again, but um so that that's what I'd love to see, I think we could start looking at different contractors over the next thirty days. Just so we're prepared, we know who um we may consider for an RFP, you know, bring it to council where we can have. Multiple different people to look at and and maybe bid on this and. Um at least have that contingency plan in motion, just in case they don't come to a resolution, which is something I do hope that they do.
Yeah, and I I appreciate all those thoughts and I I don't disagree with you, mayor, I just feel like. This directly impacts the city's operations and our ability to function, and so maybe shedding some light on that. Um as a collective would be helpful, um because we, it it's no doubt, I mean. We pay fifty-nine thousand dollars there, we won't even come close to that in the private market, um and so I think. Month-to-month, it doesn't make a huge difference, but when you look at that on the the yearly collective, that's a totally different contract we'll be looking at, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, from a staff perspective, we've reviewed it um as department heads multiple times, obviously, our IT network. Um we're we're functioning a complete public safety network off of that, and it is critical that we have IT services. Like I I can't stress that enough, and so I think what this whole situation has really taught us is that we. Likely need to take a look at that contract no matter what, and if we're gonna be held to the volatility of an elected body. That does have the right to have these tough conversations and it's democracy and they can make their decisions how they want, but if we're. If our services and network are being impacted from it and the volatility of that elected body, we likely need to move to the private sector. No matter what, um and so I think if anything, that has been the biggest conclusion that we have drawn, is that it's likely going to cost us more money. Um and we all recognize that and are aware, but we just cannot be, we cannot have our whole public safety network. At the hands of a of an elected body, it's just not a place that we wanna be in when you think of the security. And operational aspect of our whole community and and how we. and operational aspect of our whole community and, and how we function. So, um, that is something that we're looking at from a department head level and, and will continue to, because as you mentioned, uh, Councilmember Mayor, I mean, I think it's really a contractual thing that we need to look at now and, um, it just drives that decision sooner rather than later, um, and just, we can't be held in the middle of, of an elected body. Uh, so it's an unfortunate spot that we're at. We have an incredible partnership with the school and relationship, a lot of us in this room, relationships with the employees that are affected. Um, but we have to be able to be operational and that's goal number one for us. Um, so, it probably is just looking at that contract no matter what, because this has taught us all a very valuable, valuable lesson of, um, where that operational stability lies.
And then as you review that contract, it might be nice to understand, especially from an access perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Right, just so to understand, you know, if our infrastructure lives there, um, those are all important things that we should really understand over the next thirty days, should we look for a, a separate, uh, person to facilitate that until they're able to get it moved, if we do move in that direction.
Yeah, Kyle has been already working on that and, and been great about, um, helping us understand that access security aspect. So, feel super confident in him for the next thirty days, obviously not a long-term solution, um, and really, no matter what in the long term, need to take a look at that contract and likely, uh, make a tough decision and set our city up to a position where we have greater stability for our operational IT needs, which in today's day and age is quite literally the backbone of every single thing that we do. Um, so, it's something that we've had a lot of lengthy conversations on and, and will continue to do that and work with Kyle on that, who's been an incredible resource. And then, uh, if and when we're ready to make that decision, obviously, any contracts will come back before the city council.
Okay.
Um, so, two topics, I guess, brought forward, uh, that I think we need to bring conclusion to. One is, um, authoring a letter of, uh, demonstrating the impact, is that fair class?
Mm-hmm.
And then two is the contract, and, and as I was listening to Anna, uh, speak to the risk, I, I wonder if they're not kinda one in the same, um. From administration side, they're saying, hey, regardless of how this plays out, we need to go to the private sector? If I'm hearing that right, from a public safety risk perspective? Um, and so, I wonder if we put our efforts there into an RFQ, RFP, seeking that out? I think that move in and of itself speaks pretty significant volume to the school district, or should, um, or school board, excuse me, of the risk they're putting our, us and our community into, uh, and then what our future plans are. I also think timeliness, having those numbers, whether we deploy that contract in the private sector in twenty-twenty-four or wait till twenty-twenty-five, we at least know that, what that number is, what our cost is gonna be, so that we can plan for that budget accordingly into twenty-twenty-five. I don't want us to get into a situation where we don't have that number of the private sector and, um, already approve a budget for twenty-twenty-five.
Well, and, and RFP is gonna take six weeks. I mean, I mean, it could be expedited, right, but I'm just saying, I think to your point, it's better to do it now than wait.
Yeah, I think hearing that we have, we have support for the next, I'll call it thirty days, um, I'd like to get an RFP in flight. It does not mean that we need to act on a RFP or award that business, but we certainly then could understand what the trade-offs would be, what our costs would be, and, um, I, I think our number-one rule as the city council is to protect the safety and security of our city and that, that should be the goal here.
I would be in favor of us moving sooner than later. Just continuation of service is really important, the redundancy and some of the things that we get. And I think through the conversation, it's been pretty, made it pretty apparent that's an area that we should be, um, maybe not looking to save money in, because it is that important, obviously, and, and you never know that until, uh, something like this happens, so.
Is there consensus, um, on going that road and?
I, I am, um, agree, but a little bit reluctant in the fact that the, the relationship we've had with the city has worked great, or with the school district has worked great, um, up until this. If we can reroute our, or rewrite our contract with them, I, I'm not sure how that would look, that regardless of whatever political environment they're in, that they are going to provide or cover our IT services if they are unable to, if we have to go to the private sector. I, I don't know how that's written up, but.
Generally has a, oh, clause, so if one party can't fulfill that obligation, they would be the party not fulfilling it. Uh, they would owe equal to what it would cost us in the private sector.
Right.
One option.
So, yeah, I, I would look at that. And I, I think that the, the relationship in, and I would obviously rely on staff to tell us, you know, how that relationship has worked with the city, or with the school bo- board doing our IT, because it, it seems like we've had good service and, and gone through a lot of different changes with them. Um, so, I guess it's open for discussion.
Um, I, I've, yeah, I hear what you're saying and I, I feel similarly. And I, I felt like up until this point, it was a relationship that was working quite well, um, all things considered. Um, but I, at the same time, um, I do think we have to prepare ourselves and, and going through an RFP process so that we are equipped in the event we need, we need to make a nimble change. Um, we can do so, I, I think that's just good operations. Um, and so, I would advocate that we, we do both. I mean, I, I think if, if, I guess my original thought, sitting here talking about it, was that do they understand fully the implication of, of not having IT services? What that's gonna do to the city operations? Um, and I wanted to make that very clear somehow, um, but, um, yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm a little bit torn too, but I, I do think going down a joint path of pursuing the RFP now makes, makes sense, whether or not we, we actually execute a new contract or not.
I think Ryan said a good, like, I think that does send the message of doing RFP. And I think from what you just said, Tim, there's no reason the school, if everything gets figured out, they couldn't be part of that RFP, right? We have a month-to-month, we need to renegotiate contracts. Sounds like there's some clauses that we wanna get in there from a long-term basis anyways. Uh, we'll have more context to talk to them a little bit about of, hey, you know what just happened? We wanna ensure that we're protected from that in the future. Uh, so I think it would be a good idea to do an RFP and then include them in that, because the relationship has been so good and they, they would have the opportunity, if they chose to be a part of that, to kinda present forward, knowing the situation. So, and I think they would understand the situation as well, so.
Any other thoughts on the topic? Um, again, we're kinda faced with two options, I guess I would say. Um, one is to write the impact letter, the other is RFP. I'm hearing consensus on the RFP, or seeing consensus on the RFP that we should ask staff to move on that. Is there consensus, uh, above that to have a impact letter drafted on behalf of the council?
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I mean, as a courtesy, we would want to let them know we're doing this, right? Um, so, in that, could, could it not be communicated that, you know, we're, we're embarking in RFP? We will invite them to participate, but this is the reasoning behind, um, why we're going in this direction and some of the concerns that we have and.
I guess I, hearing that, I, I feel like that's an admin to IT director conversation. Uh, I guess I thought maybe we were looking for something more of a public press release or?
I think the RFP itself says, or the, behind the RFP statement, um, and it could be, you know, the conversation between the two. I think we're getting that message across one way or another.
Yeah, I think the RFP serves the purpose of, of notification and it allows us to focus on our business. So, I, I'm comfortable with just the RFP.
So, we'll start in our, I'm hearing, we'll start an RFP process, um, with this private sector, anyone, anyone interested, also including the school district? Um, public enough that local, uh, the local, um, people responding will likely understand why we're doing it too.
Yeah, I, I expect that there are many organizations that are aware that we have this agreement with the school district and that are aware of that relationship and will be awaiting for this RFP to be posted. Um, one thing I did wanna clarify is that we will need the school and Kyle has already pledged that he would absolutely be willing to help us in drafting this RFP. Um, but that would then in turn affect their ability to respond to it. But we probably could not effectively draft an RFP of what services we need and what level of services they provide and the different technician levels and the full, um, IT aspect of it. And so, he will have to help us draft that RFP. Um, so I'm not sure that the school will be able to respond to an RFP that they drafted. I'll have to think that through a little bit, um, but we will need to leverage him to help draft that, because he is the whole foundation of our IT network, so.
We need his technical language to draft that. I, I agree, I, I think maybe it, it likely is just a, so, private sector RFP and then asking the school district to, uh, provide us a contract renewal amendment, however we wanna go there.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully, at that point, they've.
Resolve.
Resolve that as well. Um, I also have a little pain hearing that we're gonna leverage Kyle for an RFP while they're in this crunch time too, but, um, it's needed for us, so.
Yeah, and he has pledged, um, you know, if he, if these contracts are, are not renewed as of July first, all that he has for employment is this small contract with us, so he's.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, even though he's one individual person, he has pledged, you know, he's got nothing but time to help support us, uh, while he navigates finding, uh, new employment. And so, I think this RFP would be, him and I already discussed that that would be a primary focus of his time with us, is just helping us to be set up with a more reliable vendor that, um, we can ensure that we have the stability we need for our public safety network. So, I will work with Kyle on that and, and to your point, Mayor, I think it's probably RFP, um, to the, to private sector or maybe there is another public sector that might be interested. We have had conversations, um, at the Stearns County level and with other neighboring communities. Uh, Stearns County assists us with our, um, criminal justice network already, um, and then allowing amendments or, or suggesting requiring amendments from this month-to-month contract with the school going forward if we're gonna remain with them, just to be able to provide some stability and security for us, this doesn't happen again. So, we can run both tracks parallel. I think I hear that message loud and clear.
I think one other thing, not to add more, but I'm going to, um, just as we look into next year, you know, looking for critical infrastructure, what's on a month-to-month? Do we have other single points of failure? We don't have the internal expertise that is fully contracted out and what do those contracts look like? Just, just an overhaul as we go into the twenty-twenty-five budget of looking for different places where we may have the same risks, so it doesn't pop up and really, it would come from, you know, the staff's internal expertise, uh, what doesn't exist and then start looking at those contracts to ensure that we feel comfortable should something happen to the company we're currently partnering with, so.
Mm-hmm.
We're probably all ready to go home, but, uh, from a public safety standpoint, like, this is a really difficult issue. Uh, and to your point, Jed, single points of failure are always my biggest fear. Um, and oftentimes, with private sector contracts and IT services, that's exactly what we experienced. They overturn staff at a much higher level. Uh, th- those private sector staff are oftentimes looking and vying for another positions and jobs. So, we get somebody trained in on a public safety piece and certified through the BCA, uh, and then they move on and they go. So, that's, we did look heavily at Stearns County for that reason. Uh, they have a really large depth of staff there. The biggest issue is, is Stearns County willing to take on an additional contract? And I'm not so sure that they will be yet.
And at what cost?
Right.
But, we'll, we will explore that and, um, to, to Chief's point, it's, um, I, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna over-exaggerate and be dramatic, but it's devastating for all of us who consider the school IT team, um, and have worked with them and they've provided incredible stability and that, that point of failure hasn't been there to date. Uh, Councilmember Elmas, you're spot-on of what that relationship has been. Um, they're an incredible team of ours. They're just as much a part of our team as every one of us sitting here. So, it is really hard to know that we may need to look elsewhere, but I just think we have to prioritize the operational stability of the city and, and our police and fire networks, um, being the utmost priority in that. So, we will move forward on that and I, I think we have our marching orders. And then, to your point, I think, um, we do keep track of all of our, our contracts and can just go through and make sure, you know, where there's some other pain points where we could see some single points of failure or are seeing volatility, especially in this market, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, Rob, good luck following that.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You have my report as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Who wants to start off? Any questions for Rob?
Rob, I have a question for you. How are you gonna pay for the IT, increased IT cost? Just kidding.
Yeah, uh, well, we actually begin pulling together budgets over the next month or two here. Uh, I have some calendar invites for all the departments, so it'll be interesting to see how that all comes together for next year. So, we'll have an update as soon as we can aggregate some numbers.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, community development.
Mayor, members of the council, you have my monthly report. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for community development? Um, if we can follow up with, uh, the individuals spoke tonight, I'm guessing you have that info?
Yes, I can follow up with that. It might be, um, a task that both, um, Lisa and I will tackle, um, and follow up with that and just make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, we do have an official weed inspector, but it is a delegated duty, so.
Um, who is it again?
To staff. From me.
Is there a statute, you can't delegate weed control?
There is a statute that we have to have it, it is allowed to be delegated. Uh, commissioner updates.
None at this time, thank you.
Tim?
Um, I got just a couple of comments on the report tonight. I love the dashboards from the finance and the, and administrative. It's, makes it easy reading, breaks up the packets as you read through. Then there's some graphics and some actual easy reading for me. And they're easy to follow, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Jed?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Uh, the only thing I would add is just capping off the special presentations we had, um, I mean, easy to categorize all, categorize all three of those as giving and, and what our community stands for, from RSVP, uh, volunteers to our law enforcement and, and then to, uh, the Tink Award for St. Cloud Financial Field. So, awesome to see, uh, fun to have all that on one night. And, uh, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.